Good morning. Welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting for February 7th, 2023. Would everyone please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have our agenda reviewed, Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. That passes. At this time, we need to recess the board meeting for the Economic Development Authority meeting. Move to recess?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. Thank you. All right. Come on up.
Good morning, Miss.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are we this morning?
Good morning. Nice sunny morning.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, would you like to do an agenda review?
Please do.
All right. There are no changes to the EDA meeting today.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. And the minutes.
I'll move the minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you. All right. We're going to speak on affordable housing plan.
And we have Lisa Graf, our consultant that helped us put the project together. And so she'll kind of give you some updated information on what we heard at the listening sessions and how we adjusted the plan process. And I know we did give you copies of our plan with the red light highlighted information that we actually updated based on some of those changes. Go ahead, Lisa.
Nancy, good morning. As Nancy indicated, we went through the draft plan back in January. And since that time, we held a couple of community meetings, also met with the homeless response team. We actually had really good participation at the community engagement events. We had 87 people attend those two events. Actually, more people attended the presentation of the plan than some of the early engagement events that we had. And so, as Nancy indicated, we've made a couple modifications to the plan. Nothing significant. A lot of it is just some clarification and additions. So we'll kind of go through quickly what some of those changes are in case you have any questions on those changes. So just a couple of things that we did within some of the homeless data, we just made sure there was clarity around some data is produced on households and others is produced based on individuals, so clarifying that information. We also really expanded a lot of the information around education needs, so focusing on the fact that there is financial literacy available, homebuyer education, and then also tenant landlord education. So that was something that came up a lot during our engagement. So instead of using that broad category of engagement, we've got put more specificity behind that tenant landlord piece within there. Also, it came up during the community session that we maybe should ensure that faith-based organizations were highlighted as one of our potential partners. I think we kind of take for granted that they are a part of our teams and committees and engagement that we do, but ensuring that that is, they're spelled out as an organizational partner within our work. So that was a couple of the changes. Also, we placed a lot of emphasis, you know, homeownership and affordable homeownership really came up as a critical need within the planning process and the community engagements. We focused a lot on the community land trust as a new model, but also wanted to ensure within the plan, we didn't forget about the other resources that do exist out there. So again, that piece around homebuyer education, construction financing, gap financing, closing cost assistance, all those various resources, and also making sure that we included our partners like Habitat for Humanity, and then also modular manufactured housing being housing resources as well that help meet that affordable housing need. One of the things that came up under EDA's authorities and asset section within the plan is that, you know, people look to what St. Peter has done around their EDA developing subdivisions within their community and just wanted to ensure that we, you know, highlighted within there that that is a resource, that if our local EDAs want to actually take a direct development role, they have the power to do that. So ensuring that information was clear within the plan. And then lastly, you know, really that kind of piece around how we can use the plan as a communication tool, that it can be a way that we can continue to report back to the community the progress we're making towards our goal as well. And again, ensuring collaborators such as school districts were included, and then that tenant landlord education pieces I mentioned before. So again, no major changes, a lot of just really clarity, adding, ensuring we added some additional partners that we, again, maybe took for granted a bit and didn't, you know, know they're a part of the puzzle, but didn't have them, you know, specifically named within there. So that's just kind of a quick summary of the changes that we made. Any questions on those changes?
We did also put together a one pager that you should have all had.
Yep.
Sorry, mine ended up being black and white, but it should be a colored one. It really, we had heard a lot about affordability and what affordability means and how it's different for everybody. So this was really designed around that concept and really looking at income within our community, so kind of categorize that. So when you look at this, you'll see that based on incomes, less than 30% area median income. This is a demographic information of the programs and the services that we're attaching in that area and trying to address the needs. Then you have the 31% to 80% of area median income. And then it identifies there the different programs and resources that we would be working towards, as well as then on the higher end, above 80% area median income, and what programs that we ensure that are available to our community as well. So it does hit all those different spectrums, and then all our different partners are listed there with our different funding sources. Actually, it kind of lists more of the strategies, but definitely, you know, we have a number of different partners within our community that are addressing those different strategies. It also looks at the housing demand, especially specifically around rental housing, homeownership, and then on the very bottom corner is some of the homeless numbers. So those are kind of our benchmarks and what we're aiming for every year to address for affordable rental units, market rate rental units, and then single-family homes across the spectrum. And then keeping me in mind those homeless numbers on the bottom and that we're trying to address those needs as well in our community and our plan.
We kind of looked at it, like, how can we take a 50-page document and the critical information in there and put it in one key infographic that is really useful for people as they're looking at the housing needs within the county?
Well, this is very good. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a very busy summary, but if that's 80 pages summarized, you did very well. And it is very helpful. I mean, there's a lot of stuff on there. Thank you.
So what do they consider now for like a couple with low-income rental would cost?
For like, just us two people? Probably like a one-bedroom unit, so we're definitely looking at that range of probably, I know what we see a lot, we're in that $900 range. When I'm looking at it too, we kind of add those utility costs to it by seeing a lot of people just paying electric, so we're probably in that range. You start moving up into the two bedrooms, you're looking at $1,100.
Okay.
And that's what we're seeing as we're subsidizing some of the lower-income families. So it's moving up in the process.
Do, does the city of Mankato or the outlining areas have any big plans for low-income? Are workforce housing coming up besides what's being built right now?
I know we're talking with developers right now to see if there's any new developers coming in looking at affordable housing projects. The city has never turned down any developer, so we have had it many times where we have two or three developers going in for funds, and it's really up to the state if they'll give us one project or two projects. Looking at tying other funding to that, I think there's more dollars out there right now coming through the states that might be able to help leverage different programs. I see a lot of money out there right now. We've been looking at shelters, and so there's a lot of money coming through the legislature on supporting the shelters and doing a support housing project. Definitely affordable units is key in our community, and also probably just as important is subsidies, and there's supposed to be more subsidies available to make housing costs more affordable. And so as we see those, we're definitely going to be accessing those from the federal government. They've been saying that they're going to be doing it, and then the state is also looking at saying, hey, the feds aren't doing enough. We're going to be looking at some rental assistance programs that housing authorities can come and mimic the housing voucher program with state funds. And so we hope to see that come through so that we could access some of those too and expand the number of families we can serve with both the vouchers.
Are we still having problems with some of the manufacturers getting employees because there is no housing?
We're excited.
I'm sure there probably are some. Occasionally, we hear about that. I know last summer, I was talking to a manufacturing company that needed people, and we're looking at other avenues to bring people into our community, and we definitely shared that information with our current participants. So we had over 700 families that we could send out and say, hey, they're looking for jobs. And I know some of those families did get jobs at that manufacturing company. So sometimes it's a matter of just tying the services that we're already providing to families with those employers, so encouraging that to happen.
Because I was wondering if we could work with them, those businesses, and, you know, to work together to provide maybe land or something like that? I was up at the home builder show up in the U.S. Bank Stadium this weekend, and there was a manufactured housing place where you, they had housing for like, it's like a 15 by 25, you know? But inside, you have a catch, it's a small place. But when you talk about your homeless, when you talk about, you know, low-income housing, you talk about stuff, I mean, this certainly can raise a family, but a couple could live in there, you know? But I was just, but you'd need the property, you need, I mean, they show different things where you put a bunch of these on one lot along with an area for a washing area and stuff like that. And it just made sense, whereas, you know, when you have an average housing price of over $300,000 now, it's, you know, you have to bring something down for folks that are just starting out and don't have that $30, $40-an-hour job, you know?
I know, definitely working with businesses too to see if there's ways that they can financially support a workforce housing project. So that will be definitely part of the action steps that we're looking at, so.
Thank you so much. Okay.
We would ask that you would approve the resolution accepting this plan.
Motion?
I'll move.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Good job.
Yes, very good. Good report. Thank you very much. Thanks for answering my questions too.
Nice to hear the turnout. Thank you much.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you very much, Nancy.
I'll move adjourn. Second.
Motion to adjourn and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. All right. We will continue on with drainage. Craig?
Morning, Craig.
Good morning, Craig. Now, we have two bid awards today, both on County Ditch 86, actually two different projects. First bid award for the construction of a contract for County Ditch 86, Branch 2 and 3. The bids for the approved improvements of Branch 2 and 3 of County Ditch 86 were solicited by advertising in the Mankato Free Press and advertisement in a trade website. On January 18th, 2023, bid submissions were received for the work. Seven contractors submitted bids for the proposed work. A summary of the bids is below. Digger Enterprises submitted a lump sum bid of $91,887. The engineer's estimate was $106,887. Charles J. Brandle, ISG, has recommended approval of the Digger Enterprises to perform the work as outlined in the bid documents and specifications. So the action requested is that we are requesting the Drainage Authority award the bid to Digger Enterprises in the amount of $91,887 for the proposed construction.
Still moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. Passes. Thank you.
The second bid award is for the construction of contract for County Ditch 86, Branch X. Bids for the approved construction of the new Branch X to the County Ditch 86 were solicited by advertising in the Mankato Free Press and advertisement in a trade website. On January 18th of 2023, bid submissions were received for the work. Nine contractors submitted bids for the proposed work. A summary of the bids is below. Leland Drainage and Excavating submitted a lump sum bid of $79,868. The engineer's estimate was $81,693.84. Charles J. Brandle, ISG, has recommended the approval of Leland Drainage Excavating to perform the work as outlined in the bid documents and specifications. We are requesting the Drainage Authority to award the bid to Leland Drainage and Excavating in the amount of $79,868 for the proposed construction.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just got one question, Mr. Chair. I've heard it twice now, this single bid lump sum bid. I don't know if I've heard that phrase, and I know what it is, probably, but...
Yeah, I just decided it was the wording that Chuck used in his letter, so I...
So they just bid it, they don't break it down, I'm assuming? It's just a lump sum bid?
I'm assuming that's kind of what it is.
All right, because I just haven't heard that language before. And Chuck's checked out both these contractors. Neither one of them familiar to me, so I'm sure Chuck did.
Yeah, they're new to us, but they've actually worked with ISG. Both of them have worked with ISG in other projects in the past for other counties. So they're not new to ISG, and they've done good work.
Thank you.
There's some close bids here.
Yeah, $22.
Well, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. Passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
All right. We will run to Public Works. Ryan?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Ryan. How are you this morning?
Not too bad. Yourself?
Not bad.
Good.
I'm also getting a little cold, so my voice a little raspy, that's why. If I cough from it, I apologize. I'm pretty sure it's well past its mandate to be contagious. First action item we have on our agenda is consideration of final contract payment for State A project 007607. Oh, 11, this is Cassaw 7 in the city of Mapleton, urbanization of the segment from Barkard Street to a half a mile south. They included a trail in front of the 812 Maple River School. Original contract amount for WW Blacktopping was $1.2 million. Final contract amount, $1,000,137,651.41, and final contract payment amount, $1,847.75. I would recommend approval of this final contract payment.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. That passes.
All right. The next action item in your packet is consideration of a resolution relating to parking resolution for restriction of parking on Cassaw 56 in Eagle Lake. As you know, 56 runs from our roundabout with Cassaw 17 up past the Casey's gas station to US Highway 14. The city of Eagle Lake has significant concerns about safety and mobility. They're finding that semis and other large vehicles park there, and a lot of people, especially during the summer months, are utilizing the shoulders because of no trail to get out to the trail segment that leads to the pond, which is very popular for fishing, and the bike underpass that connects with the Secunda Trail. The city would like to restrict parking. I support that. The city would be responsible for posting the no parking and enforcement of the no parking zone, so I included a resolution authorizing no parking zone along that segment of Cassaw 56, and have also attached the city of Eagle Lake resolution requesting no parking along that segment. I would recommend approval of that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
To be honest with you, I don't think I've ever seen anything parked on that road, but I certainly support this. It makes sense, because a lot of people do walk up and down that. And we've talked about a path there, which is problematic because it's a tough road to build a path on.
Correct.
Reasonably priced, so good, good for them.
Yep.
Thank you for bringing it forward.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Passes.
All right. Action item number three is considering a resolution requesting advanced funding of our Cassaw municipal funds for construction of Cassaw 10 and 72 in the city of Burnet Center. As we know, the city has been struggling with funding those projects as part of a larger comprehensive city water sewer and street reconstruction project, and they intend to move forward this year in order to meet our Cassaw eligible items. Obviously, project costs are up on everything. It would require we utilize our entire Cassaw municipal fund balance and the 2023 allocation, as well as about $305,000 from our 2024 allocation. We can borrow into the future as long as not everybody in the state's doing it, and it just requires a resolution of this nature. So this is why it's been included in your packet, so that we can secure the funds for the city to move forward with their project. So I would recommend approval of the Cassaw Municipal Construction Advanced Funding Resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely. Action item number four is consideration of attachment Y. This is that notification of generation resource or the node that we talked about a few months ago for the Rapid End Dam where Excel Energy has it set up on their system as a settlement node so that they can monitor it, and there's reporting required. I had reported this to the board, and it had just taken a while for Eagle Creek to get me the final paperwork and information and fill this form out. So this would terminate that settlement node from Excel Energy's system so that we don't have to do reporting, nor does Eagle Creek, in all effective way, the dam's not producing electricity. There's really no reason to just be reporting that nothing's happening. I would recommend approval of attachment Y, notification of generation resource, dot, 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 change notice of rescission.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. Thank you.
All right. And then I've got it listed as an action item. It's discussion and hopefully action. I wanted to update the board on where we're at with our county-state highway allocations. I previously reported on November 3rd that we were estimating a 7% reduction in our Cassaw funding. It's been backed off now. Fortunately, it still isn't the same as 2023, but it's a 2.5% reduction. So in the memorandum included in your packet, I provided an update on our fund balances and comparison of the 2022 versus the 2023 distributions. So you can see our total construction dollars are down $182,507 from last year, and our total maintenance dollars are down $120,671 from last year. When compared to the previous memorandum that I had shared with the board, it's a significant difference compared to that 7% reduction, the 2.5% reduction yields us in the better. While we still take a loss, it's $281,000 less of the loss for construction, I'm sorry, $295,720 better in construction, so we don't lose $295,720. And in maintenance, we don't lose $197,148. So that's good, it's good news, but it's still bad news, I guess is the best way to say it.
Better. Better news.
Yeah, better, bad news. With that being said, I think, you know, the board recognized the challenge that backing almost $300,000 out of our budget was especially to our capital projects and equipment budget, knowing that we now have an additional $200,000 coming in that we didn't anticipate. We made budget adjustments and took items out, and I've summarized those in the table that follows. I would like to request, you know, going through the document, we delayed the Bray Park Trail repairs. We had delayed the Red Jacket Valley picnic shelter. However, that was already stricken out at a previous budget meeting, so we actually made another adjustment later in the document. We had delayed the tractor loader with forks purchase by year. That was a deferred equipment purchase, one of our last pieces of deferred equipment. Delayed the rubber tire roller, delayed the fuel pumps, delayed the metal culvert purchases, the bifold mower, and also the boom mower was added as a, was pushed back to try to offset that fact that the Red Jacket Shelter was not in the budget. It was in the version I looked at, but not the one that I should have pulled up off of Beckshare. So with that, I guess I would like to ask the board for permission to make budget adjustments to show additional revenue and purchase a few of these pieces of equipment that we had pushed off when we had thought we were going to have a more significant reduction. You can see in the 2/7, February 7th, 2023, recommended budget addition, I would request that we add the tractor loader with forks purchase back in, as well as the bifold mower purchase and the delayed boom mower purchase. And that would still leave us underneath the $197,000, trying to offset a little bit as well for potential, for inflation.
You've talked about this with Bob, I would imagine, and... Yes. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Ryan and I have talked about this and trying to get the budget to reflect where we can make those investments in areas that are clearly of need. I'll move approval for the recommendation.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Makes perfect sense to me.
Thank you for that. Our line staff will thank you for that and getting some...
Well, we got to vote on it first.
You better do that.
Hopefully, you can get the equipment yet before spring.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. Now you can...
Now we can thank you.
Now you can send the text.
All right. And then we'll move on to the northern long-eared bat update for our informational items. November 30th, 2022, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service published a final rule in the Federal Register stating that it reclassifies the northern long-eared bat from threatened to an endangered species. I think we've touched on this briefly, but I just wanted to go a little bit more in depth and provide you with an explanation of why this is such a problem for us. January 25th, they provided a notice that the effective date for the rule reclassifying the bat to endangered would be March 31st, 2023. Generally, the bat's active season is April 1st through March, I'm sorry, October 31st for the state of Minnesota. Under the previous guidance, we were generally able to take trees until June 1st. Now, under this guidance, habitat removal, which includes tree clearing, is a prohibited activity outside of November 1st through March 31st. With that being said, all of our 2023 grading projects are not federal, therefore, they don't have a previous project review that would authorize us to take trees. So now effectively, that window from April 1st to June 1st is gone as far as we understand it. I am reaching out to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to try to see if they can actually do a review of our project, because previously, if you looked at the guidance, there were different criteria that had to be met. And our county doesn't even have a known northern long-eared bat hibernaculum or population. I think the closest one was the very northern northeastern corner of La Sura County. So I've attempted to reach out to them. We've been playing phone tag. I don't know how successful we'll be on that. I don't know how successful we'll be on that. For our projects, we're moving quickly on Casas sixteen to solicit for a tree removal contract to get the trees down before March thirty-first. The other projects, we're going to be facing some significant challenges, and I'll get into that when I get into the project updates. But obviously, we have to have right-of-way acquisition before we can take trees. So it's a, it's a significant impact to our, our overall schedule and ability to complete projects that include grading or tree removals. So that's some of the bad news. Any questions on the bats at all? Okay. My next, I apologize, this month's going to be kind of a, I'm going to be a little bit of a Debbie Downer, just trying to bring you guys the facts, though. Construction inflation is another item that we've obviously discussed quite a bit, and I wanted to share with you pages from a recent presentation that was put together by the County Engineers Association that we've been sharing with the legislature. And it talks a lot about, obviously, the need for revenue. We always need money, but why it's so important now and inflation has become a really significant impact to us. You can see on the first slide out, slide, it talks about the cost for battunus overlays going up significantly. The statistic there was for Carver County had gone from about one hundred and twenty-five thousand to one hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars a mile just for a two-lane rural road to lay an extra inch and a half or two inches of blacktop and shoulders to smooth and strengthen the road. Our costs, we've seen it gone up from about one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a mile to about one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a mile. That's still a dramatic increase, probably sixteen to twenty percent. That results in less miles getting done, obviously with the same amount of money. Concrete box culverts are incredibly challenging right now. They've seen a fifty percent cost increase in the last year. And in addition to that, because of market conditions, labor shortages, and global conglomerates buying out the manufacturing facilities and reducing hours, now it's a nine-month delay to order a box culvert. So you have to have the project ready effectively a year in advance before you can get it done. And these were projects that we would slip box culverts in at the end of the year. We would, we would usually let a box culvert contract in August or September for it to be constructed in late September or October because the market was, the contractors usually had appetite and the suppliers were able to provide those. Bridge replacement costs have risen twenty-five percent over the last two years. Traffic signals are up about thirty-one percent over the last two years. And as you know, the equipment's up about twenty-five percent since twenty-twenty. And even salt for deicing is up about twenty percent since two thousand and twenty. So I wanted to share this information with the commissioners of we're getting a lot, a lot less buying power with our dollars. And if it seems like we're getting less work out the door, this is a large portion of why, because we're, we're really, the market is very violent right now.
Makes sense.
All right. Any questions on that at all?
No. I think everybody understands how much inflation is hitting everybody.
Absolutely.
And obviously with petroleum costs and everything, that's where the
Big driver as well, fuel costs.
Roads and bridges are going to be hit the most, so.
Project updates, Casas sixteen from the La Sura River to ninety. The right-of-way acquisition is nearly complete. There's one landowner left, which I think is a matter of just basically signing the documents. Request for tree clearing has been solicited for completion prior to March thirty-first. The project is advertised for bids to be opened on February twenty-second and planned to award on the March seventh board meeting. Casas thirteen from one sixty-nine to Casas one was scheduled for twenty-twenty-three. Project plans have been completed and are close to being approved by the state. The project is facing several issues that is going to make construction in twenty-three very, very challenging. As we talked about, the recent decision on the northern long-eared bat will make it nearly impossible to clear trees prior to March thirty-first due to the fact that we're just beginning to acquire right-of-way. In addition to that, there's so many landowners out there, so many different parcels, even with Jack and Ryan both working on that project, it's going to be very challenging. Additionally, the state has not approved bridge bonding, which was expected to provide fifty percent cost for the large bridge replacement. That is about one and a half million dollars of the total project budget. That coupled with inflation, when we had talked about funding the project with fund reserves to, to balance out out of our local option sales tax, the project was about a seven and a half million dollar total project. Now the total project cost with inflation is up to about ten million dollars. The US Army Corps of Engineers permit has been submitted, but the timeline for approval is uncertain. And following the right-of-way acquisition and tree removals, there's quite a fair, quite a few utilities out there that need to be relocated out into the new edges of the right-of-way. All of those things combined, our staff believes it's best to delay construction until twenty-twenty-four and permit time to do utility relocations, tree clearing, obviously obtain all of the necessary right-of-way. And in the meantime, we'll also keep our fingers crossed that things look positive, that there will be either a cash or bonding bill this year that should send out some bridge replacement money. So unfortunate, we were, we were looking forward to getting that delivered this year. However, all of those things stacking up against us made it very formidable and challenging. Casas twenty-six, the project plans have been completed and are close to being approved by MINDOT. Right-of-way acquisition is beginning. We don't need a lot of fee title. We need some easement out there. The struggle we have is obviously we need to get the trees taken down. All of our storm sewer for that project goes down the project and dumps out into one ravine. That ravine requires tree clearing because we're going to do a series of drop manholes that will dissipate the energy before the water discharges into the ravine system. The struggle we have with that is the landowner who owns that property passed away about a month ago. And so now we're trying to attempt, the home is up for sale, which just obviously significantly complicates that process. So that's a top priority for us to get in touch with and work through the legalities of that and try to get permission to take the trees down before March thirty-first. Otherwise, we'll have to try to work through the US Fish and Wildlife Service, see if we can get a provisional clearance. I'd hate to see that project be delayed because of, of one property. However, that may be the, may be the God's honest truth. I guess we're, we're going to find out here over the next month and change. So. It's frustrating for us, obviously, the amount of work we put into delivering these projects and then to have these things like this happen. And it's also, we want to make sure that our staff have an adequate workload to state. I mean, there's plenty of work to do, but this is their bread and butter and what they're really good at, and we want to keep them, keep them on their toes.
How much they want for the house?
We talked about that. And if the board would want to give me permission to buy it, we could buy it, subdivide it and then flip it. It's, I'd have to look and see how much exactly it is, but it would certainly make sense, and I don't think we'd come out losing very much on it.
We'd put the project off, you got construction costs going up at fifteen percent.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't give you authorization to do that right now, but I certainly think it's something you should
I can bring that back.
Investigate a little more.
In two weeks if you'd like, or I can send an email.
Or just do some, talk with Bob a little bit and just see if it's, I mean, I won't be opposed to it if it numbers.
That's great to hear because we did talk about that if we couldn't get in touch with them and work out a deal of maybe asking for permission just to purchase that home.
See if you can make it work.
Then go through the, the easement documents and then just turn around and repost it.
Sell the property after we're done then.
Yep. I like the way you think.
Make him work a little harder for it, wouldn't you?
Just thinking everything's going to take him a year or longer.
Well, that's the whole thing. I mean, and, and in that case, you might have to get to going because properties still sell pretty fast. So you'd have to get going on it right of way.
We will, I know Ryan's been trying to get in touch with the realtor representing that and the owners, so I will certainly be one of my first priorities when I get back to the office. Additionally, we're working on Casas eleven from the West County Line, beginning project design. We'll be scheduling a public open house later this summer. Victory Drive, Casas eighty-two from South Hoffman to Fair Street. A quest for professional design services was sent out to SRF, Bolton and Mink and Stone Brook Engineering, and we anticipate county board consideration of those proposals on March seventh. Our maintenance crews have been busy cleaning up after a recent snowstorm. It's been nice to have a reprieve so they can go push snow back and clean boulevards, restock sand and salt files. So they've managed to stay busy without having snowstorms to fight. This recent ice storm, I know they were out trying to get that melted off today. We had some recent bridge load postings you may hear about. The state of Minnesota does special hauling, with all these boutique bills that are approved by the state legislature to allow septic haulers and beat trucks and you name it, all these different commodities are given weight exemptions by the state legislature. This requires the DOT to go through and do special hauling vehicle load ratings on bridges. And so as part of that, they've been load rating several of our bridges. Two of them that were done by SRF came back rated very low. Bridge number nine zero one four one, which is on Casas fifteen, and bridge L eighty-nine ninety on Casas twenty-six, both steel arch culvert pipes that are well, well at the end of their service life. SRF load rated the Casas fifteen bridge at five tons, so only a ten thousand pound vehicle was legally allowed to go over the top of it. And the Casas twenty-six bridge was load posted at ten tons, so a twenty thousand pound vehicle. To meet the state requirements, we load posted both of those accordingly and caught obviously some backlash from the public and other agencies that were utilizing those roads. We determined it was necessary to attain a second opinion, so I actually hired Stone Brook Engineering to look at those and do a, do a detailed inspection and load rating on them and get a second opinion. And with that, after their evaluation, the Stone Brook Bridge Engineer determined the load ratings could be increased, but it would require routine monitoring of the bridges. So every three to six months, we actually need to do inspections of them to make sure that they're still safe. And so with that, the Casas fifteen bridge will be posted as a fourteen tons for a single unit vehicle and twenty-six ton, or twenty-four tons for a semi. And the bridge on Casas twenty-six will be load posted as a twenty-four ton for a single unit, forty tons, so a fully legal loaded semi for semi configuration. We do have both of those bridges on our bridge replacement priority resolution, and we're actually looking at trying to order a box culvert for the Casas fifteen crossing and getting that done or possibly having our own crews put in plastic pipe to replace it. So we're hoping to get something ordered within the coming weeks and make that a priority project. The revised postings have been approved by MINDOT and they've been reposted. So if you do hear about it, that's the sequence of events that happened. And the last item I have in my update is a relatively brief Rapid End Dam update memorandum. This is obviously my monthly update. It's been relatively quiet. On January tenth, I received an email from the FERC inquiring about the status of our twenty-twenty-two emergency action plan status report. I further discuss that because in all honesty, I don't know that I was aware that that was necessary since we had just redone the emergency action plan. So I provided that document response on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three and have not, it was accepted by the FERC. I've not received an additional response on it yet. We continue to have periodic project management team meetings with bar engineering regarding the FERC licensure surrender processes. They're working on it since my last report, bar engineering has completed scoping and research about the exemption surrender process, communicated with the FERC Division of Hydro Power Administration and compliance about those requirements, making sure that we're setting up the right boxes to be checked in our process effectively. And completed a draft notice of intent and cover letter and working on developing an outline for the licensure surrender application and process. We just had a call yesterday. We're going to be scheduling actually a meeting with all of the, after we send out this notice, it'll go out to different tribes, it'll go out to US Fish and Wildlife Service, all of those different regulatory agencies that has a notice saying, look, we're looking at surrendering the FERC license and this is their first chance to comment, and then we'll develop the more detailed plan, and they'll be able to comment along that process. So we're working through that process right now with bar engineering, and it's continuing to progress behind the scenes. So with that, I would answer any questions, but that would conclude my report.
Anybody have any questions?
Any other questions at this point?
Me neither. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. All right. And we have anything from the county attorney's office?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Bob, administration.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, first item is county board minutes for January twenty-fourth.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Pass. Thank you.
Next would be the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion on the bills for the last two weeks? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. It passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number seven in your pack. It is the Human Resources Department agenda. Just have informational items for the board today. We do have a promotion of a property environmental resources specialist moving over to the Human Services Department as a child support enforcement specialist. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that property environmental resources specialist position. And we filled a number of positions, starting with a nine-one-one telecommunicator in our dispatch office. We also filled a part-time nine-one-one telecommunicator. And we filled an eligibility specialist in our Human Services Department, a correctional officer in the jail, a child support enforcement specialist in our Human Services Department, and then another eligibility specialist in Human Services. Lastly, then, is employment of a property and environmental resources supervisor. This is a landfill supervisor as we begin that transition to taking over the operations of the landfill fully from the contractor. So be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those human resources items.
Got any questions?
No.
All right. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number eight in your pack. It is an exempt gambling permit. This is for a Ducks Unlimited chapter that plans to hold an event in March at the Indian Island Winery. So recommending approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. It passes. Go ahead.
Item number nine in your pack, it is the county attorney's annual report for twenty-twenty-two. The county attorney was unable to be here this morning, but wanted this report to be made available to the public. So I won't review the data, but in talking with the county attorney indicated if the board has any questions, feel free to forward them to him, and he'd be happy to respond.
Okay.
And that's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
All right. So it comes on back to the commissioner reports. I'll start with you this morning, Mark.
Okay, it's pretty short. See, the first February, we had department heads, and I did have February sixth, AMC General Gov online, and that basically.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
After our last board meeting, we, I had a couple statewide emergency communication boards. We had our full board meeting and my legislative, legislative meeting. And I'm also on the finance committee meeting also, not as a voting member, but just an informational participant. Had planning and zoning last Wednesday night. We got a item coming up for a VRBO with our new policy, and we have some worked up constituents in the area. So we will be, we actually ended up continuing it till the Wednesday meeting because we had a lot of information that night, and the staff just didn't have a chance to respond to it efficiently. So we postponed that till March first. We'll see it at the end of March, probably.
Okay.
And then I was also at my MRCI board meeting yesterday. We were in the process of hiring, or we did hire, a new director yesterday. of hiring, or we did hire, a new director yesterday to take Brian Benshue's place. I didn't bring his name with me. His first name is Casey, or goes by Casey. He's coming from Iowa and is hopefully going to get up and running within the next month. So that'll be a big asset to MRCI, but things are going very well there. We're still obviously having problems finding staff and helpers like everyone else. And then I had my PST work group training, and that's trying to put some policies in place for the 911 dispatchers. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. Patty?
Mine's a little light. I had three days of county government 101, which was really interesting to see that from this chair instead of as a staff person. Department heads on February 1, and yesterday I did the AMC lodge call. That's my report.
And Kevin?
Since our January 24 board meeting, I attended with Bob the, one of the Mankato Housing public events that was mentioned earlier. On the 27th, we had La Sura, One Watershed, One Plan Policy Committee meeting, had planning and zoning drainage update on the 31st. Also attended department heads on the 1st, and then on the February 2nd, landowner meetings with JD9 and JD10 with Brown County I attended. Conversations primarily have been on the ditches, JD10 specifically. Still getting a lot of MFS calls as well as the VRBO calls. That ends my report.
Okay. And for mine, it's fairly light. January 25, I had a Highway 169 legislative meet and greet up by the state capitol. On the 28th, I attended the Supes for Troops at the Loose Moose, which wasn't a county event, but it's certainly something for the troops. February 1 is the Department Ed meeting, and then February 2, I had a NACO transportation meeting and a towards zero death regional meeting, both on Zoom. And that's the end of mine. Moved to recess to Nicola County.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. And we are recessed.